Welcome to all of you. We're not supposed to introduce ourselves because you all have an app that was strict in my instructions, so everybody should look in the app if they wanted to know who is sitting here. If you will forgive me, I break that rule and I just say that I'm from Geneva where I work on disarmament and I came just from New York where we did quite a number of interesting talks. I am however very happy to be here with you, not because I think this is the most promising issue we have for the next PREP COM or for the next review cycle, but I think this is a very pertinent issue which played a major role in the last NPT conference and it is an issue we should deal with and I think that is for the right reasons that we have it on the table during this conference. I'm very grateful with the three people who will introduce the topic. I have met all of them before and I know they have a longstanding issue in this. I won't say more because otherwise I'm breaking that rule again. So and with that, I would like to give the floor and I would start if that's okay with you, Professor, with you, Professor Dider.
I stand down.
Whatever you feel comfortable with. If you want to sit, it's fine. If you prefer to stand, it's also fine. I would request you to limit your introduction.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Okay. That was the original time. So we...
The original one was five minutes.
I thought also it was five minutes, but now we could start to negotiate, but since we have a little bit of time, I would propose that we do it in eight minutes to give it a try.
Okay.
Shall we try that and then we have more time for discussion. I think we have a lot of interest. I know several of the colleagues sitting in the room having a long history on this issue as well, so I think it will be, it will be good if there's time for a...
I say wait, why I ask you ten minutes? Because there is a new organization and a people that don't knew this new organization, people that not knew this Pindaba Treaty, just it's time to introduce quickly the Pindaba Treaty and after go directly to the subject of this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we do it eight minutes?
Okay.
Okay, thank you and please use the microphone as much as possible. Is there anybody from the organization? I believe there were also walking microphones.
Yes.
No? Okay, then you sit down. Professor, you have the floor, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like before to thanks all the organizers and the sponsors to give us this opportunity to speak about Pindaba Treaty and also the AFCON which is in charge to implement all the Pindaba Treaty. The Pindaba Treaty is the most complete treaty. It's dealing with NPT, with non-proliferation disarmament and CCBT and all the UN specific commission which working disarmament under 1540. The birthing AFCON which is created according to Article 12 of the Pindaba Treaty needs a strong support by his member states. The P5 was also members that are a party of this because they signed the two protocols and also the IEA and the CCBT are also part of this because the sign also are part of the Pindaba Treaty. The great support that need from this, I call senior organization in order the AFCON fulfill his missions and the African Party be in compliance with the treaty Pindaba. So I go directly to the subject of this meeting, I fit with this. I would like to start from the Obama statement in Prague, all the nuclear conferences, the last conference in Washington DC. We can analyze and identify some weak signals that may be underrepresented or understand as some lines. Some lines moves slowly but moves in a positive sense toward the global regime of security and peace, not peace and security because security is a prerequisite for the peace. In this regard, let me outline that the book and movie that is lastly just presented during this Washington DC conference, this movie on military nuclear industry accident. The book is called Control and Command and this morning I heard many intervenants saying control and command, let control commands our regime of security and peace. Now I go to the Middle East directly. The African country in front of the Middle East, troubled, troubled Middle East region are not party of the Pindaba Treaty, mainly and particularly the Egypt because Egypt has a particular position. It is member of EU and African states and also Middle East states is not member of the Pindaba Treaty. Just in between us, I speak with her foreign office, with her ambassador in Vienna. He said we make a lot of, a lot of, but we don't get anything. I said all the condition to be up in the Pindaba Treaty are ready, we signed the NPT and so on and the CCBT is not in force, so we can easily, easily be member and also play a great role as a, as a jump, as a bridge between the two regions and also if Africa and if Egypt is member of Pindaba Treaty, this can reflect on the situation in the Middle Zone and moves a little bit the lines. If this non-party states, I said Egypt, Sudan, Eritrea and Djibouti. I speak with many countries. Sudan is on progress in ratification at the level of parliament. Djibouti Foreign Affairs Embassy said they will, also we are maintaining to be Pindaba Treaty. I say if this part is party, if the non-party African country becomes or we push them with some manner, I believe we can move, we can move the rigid lines in order to introduce a new way of thinking, culture in the mind of a young, new connected generation of that regimes. Because I think that as the, in this sensitive issue, the lines move very slowly and my hope is that in fourth regeneration, maybe we can reach this, this kind of order condition will be ready that we come this. The move is of course slow, but if you believe in that target of peace and security, this can be happen with that indicated, new connected generation, I said in three, four generation. So we need the sustainable, strong democracy regimes too in that region, supported by also a strong civil, civil societies. So broken that, also broken that statu quo because many, many countries in the region, they play himself in the statu quo. I don't enter in their internal interest anyway. If we go to the universalization of the Pindaba should be a starting point to assess that goal. Why? By concrete, effective binding legal provision, measures and norms towards a global regime of security and peace as I call it GRSP. Thank you for attention.
Thank you very much.
Just that eight minutes, no?
That was four and a half minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
So just I keep the, a grid line in order to keep the discussion.
Thank you very much. That was helpful. Jena, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Talk about arms control and disarmament in the Middle East currently looks a little bit detached from reality, isn't it? Because first I would say that we have to stop killing each other. That's what we are doing in the Middle East, very industrious in the... And there is a general feeling that nothing can be done in the, in a region in which the mere concept of statehood is challenged. You know, arms control in regions and disarmament is between states. But is this the current problem in the Middle East? The problem in the Middle East are that states are weakened, that non-state actors are playing a major role. And taking into account, it looks that the prospect for arm control and disarmament in this turbulent Middle East seem indeed very bleak. And particularly when you look at the recent attempts to do something, the idea of having a conference on the Middle East weapons of mass destruction free zone decided upon by the 2010 NPT REFCOM is dead for all practical purposes. The attempts of the Finnish facilitator Ambassador Neava to use the discussion about the discussions, namely meetings between the relevant parties to discuss the terms of reference, there was no agreement of the terms of reference, of course. Usually there is no agreement on anything in the Middle East. And the attempts of the Finnish facilitator to use these talks themselves as some opportunity to have real discussion between the two sides without calling it WMD free zone, WMD free zone, also ended without having any real achievements. So it seems that we are stuck, that there is no clear way which we cannot help that will lead us to achievement of the goal that by the way is accepted by everyone, the goal of establishing a WMD free zone in the Middle East. Nevertheless, I am not completely pessimistic and I will explain why I'm not completely That is because I think that what is happening in the Middle East, you know, it has many names. It started with the Arab Spring, then people were talking about Islamic Winter and now everyone is using a very neutral term and that is good. I like neutral terms and that is the transformation of the Middle East. The transformation of the Middle East is a very difficult process, but because of this process, I think that there is the beginning of serious changes in the threat perceptions and the calculations of many actors, state actors in the Middle East. I'm not talking about the other actors. And one of the, of the, of the changes is of course the understanding of many actors that the problem is the non-state actors and what we are going to do about them and how we are going to strengthen the states. And one good example to this change of security calculations and threat perception is the relationship that is developing, the better relationship that is developing between Israel and some Arab state based on communist interests. And that I think is opening new possibilities to start a fresh dialogue among, I am not as optimistic as to say among all the states of the Middle East, but at least among a coalition of the willing, a number of states that will be willing to start a dialogue on, by the way, not only on arms control and disarmament. But arms control and disarmament do not stand on their own. It's part of regional security and we have to start with dialogue on regional security to start talking about our common problems, security problems and how we are, how we are going to solve them. That will of course, will not be easy in the Middle East because you know, on one end we have this transformation, but on the other, other end, many of the state institutes and the establishment is suffering of inertia. And in my opinion, inertia is very characteristic of foreign ministers, especially in the Middle East. So they will have to, to change a little bit the way that they behave and try to think about creative ideas how to restart this dialogue. And one of the orders of course that can be adopted and there are some models in the world that, that encourage use of this, of these ways is to start by informal dialogues, track twos, track one and a half in which officials participate in their personal capacity, et cetera. Thank you. How was I standing time wise?
Absolutely. You were in five minutes. Thank you very much. Now I give the floor to Mr. Khalil.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I bring you this, this afternoon some good news and some bad news. And I begin with a positive note. And unlike the 2012 Helsinki Conference on WMD free zone which have failed to take place and never materialized, I'm glad to report that the, the 2017 PREP COM will be held as planned, on time and as scheduled next year. The bad news is that we don't have a facilitator anymore and, but most importantly, ladies and gentlemen, the NPT regimes seems to be at risk with a high possibility of slipping into coma. Perhaps the statement, Mr. Chairman, reflects the growing level of frustration and anxiety experienced by Arab intellectuals and officials, a frustration that was due to repeated setbacks and a series of negative encounters, starting as recent as the 2015 review conference where disagreement over the final document have led to the failure of the eighth session of the NPT review conference. And of course, earlier on, the 2012 United Nations mandated meeting never crystallized and before that, other setbacks took place, including the collapse of the 2005 review conference, the collapse of the ACERS process, so-called ACERS process, and the list goes on and on and on. In fact, the League of Arab States last year have commemorated the 40th anniversary of Arab efforts in pursuit of the zone. Speaking of the Middle East, Mr. Chairman, I have to emphasize that the Middle East is confronted with two challenges, two nuclear programs of different natures, two nuclear programs that are intended for different purposes. On, on the one hand, we have an Iranian nuclear program which is becoming part of the national identity and pride in Iran, a program that is perceived by the Iranians as means to demand a political leverage and to gain a foothold in the international arena. And on the other hand, we have an Israeli nuclear program that is linked somehow to the existence and survival of Israel. So how do we move forward? And that's a very important question, I believe. Perhaps rectifying false beliefs and negative perceptions is a priority. First and foremost, we have to agree that the presence of nuclear weapons in the Middle East have not made the region safer. On the contrary, it has destabilized the regional security situation and is driving others to follow suit with a very good possibility of triggering a non-conventional arms race in the region. Nuclear weapons have not and did not guarantee security to any country, including that of Israel. Furthermore, the notion of unilateral nuclear deterrence in a tight geographical context have not proven successful nor realistic as proved by many historical accounts and incidents. Mr. Chairman, the lack of political horizon and the negative atmosphere created by the derailing of the 2015 NPT review conference is driving Arab side to consider radical And I here, I have to emphasize that the triple veto which was used to cripple the process for the 2015 review conference, the veto was used basically to cripple the process of studying the requirements of a WMD free zone. I repeat, please lend me your attention. The veto was used to cripple the process of studying the requirements of a WMD free zone, not establishing a WMD free zone. And there's a great difference as you see. So you can imagine if studying the requirements is that problematic, I mean, you can imagine the complexity of talking about actual steps and measures to implement a WMD free zone in the Middle East. Mr. Chairman, with the lack of political horizon, I would like to brief you on some of the debates taken place in Arab circles and gatherings. The options outlined here do not necessarily reflect the combined official Arab position nor the position of my institute or me personally. Here are some few examples. Walkouts, number one. You remember the Egyptian walkout in 2012? That was basically a unilateral act of frustration, a highly symbolic act taking place on the day seven of the, of the meeting. Well, walkouts could be seen again in the near future in various forms, either in an individual walkout format or a, basically in a combined fashion. Another possibility is to have a combined walkout with a political initiative coupled with a political initiative. Another issue of receiving adequate attention and that is revisiting the 1995 resolution and its indefinite extension process. As you know, the indefinite extension process took place. There was a, an Arab consent basically, allowing the, the indefinite extension in return for a resolution on the Middle East. And revisiting, of course, one side of the, of the, of the formula was applied and that is we have indefinite extension for the NPT regime, but still we don't have any, any tangible steps taking place towards achieving a, a nuclear weapon free zone or a WMD free zone. Engaging and supporting new norms and initiatives such as new humanitarian impact initiative and the open-ended working group is another option that seems feasible and tenable to many Arabs. And many other issues I think I would leave for discussion. Jena Brom, the fact that the region is undergoing transformation, as you have mentioned, the fact that the region is flooded by non-state actors who have increasing number of activities is the more, makes it even more important and a better cause to engage in sincere negotiations to disarm the region and to declare the Middle East as a nuclear weapon free zone. If I was an Israeli decision-making, maker in the Israeli decision-making process, I would have concluded this issue together with a possible settlement with Arab-Israeli conflict as soon as, as, as I can, given the current turmoil in the region. Mr. Chairman, there are predictions that the 2017 PREP COM is not going to be an easy task. In all cases, we are confident that the Dutch presidency of the conference and our colleagues from INBUSA are suitably equipped to deal with this challenge and I wish Ambassador van der Kust the best of luck in sharing and handling this enormous and difficult task. And I conclude by thanking the organizers for this event and I hope that the Brexit offset would not lead to a consortium upset. Thank you so much.
It's a nice way to... Thank you very much for that. I would do, if you all three agree with that, five questions in a row, since I see quite a number of questions. I would ask the people who have a question to formulate as concise and clear as possible to introduce yourselves shortly and if you want one of the three speakers to answer or more of them, just identify so. I start with Bob Einhorn. You're the first.
Okay. But there is...
Sorry, Mr. Einhorn, behind you and you're the second one.
Thank you. I'm Bob Einhorn from Brookings. I have a warm place in my heart for the Middle East Zone Free of All Weapons of Mass Destruction. Nabeel Fami and I co-drafted that resolution in 1995. Mahmoud was, was a part of that. But I think the reality is tangible progress toward that zone, toward the nuclear portion of that zone is going to be very difficult, very difficult. And that's why it was so hard to get this conference underway over the last several years. I would urge participants in the region to consider a more practical approach to making real progress and there are a number of things that could be done. Mr. Khalil, you referred to ACERS, the Arms Control and Regional, Regional Security Working Group of the Middle East Peace Process. This was in the early 90s. It made extraordinary progress. It was very positive. It then, it broke up over the nuclear issue, but I would suggest trying on a voluntary basis, whatever, to get as many states of the region together, maybe to begin with informal discussions or making them more formal eventually about regional security matters, confidence building matters. It was a real start in doing this in the early 90s. We should look at the possibility. As far as the zone itself, there's some early steps toward a total zone that could be taken. For example, the head of the CCBTO likes the idea of a Middle East Free of Nuclear Weapons testing. This would be an extraordinarily positive development. Three of the so-called holdout states are in the Middle East and if they joined, it would give a huge boost to entry into force of the CCBT. I think this would be an important step. Chemical weapons. There's chemical weapons use in the Middle East today. Syria has joined the Chemical Weapon Convention, although its adherence to that convention is very much in doubt. But why not a Middle East Free of All Chemical Weapons? And the negotiation of that, the mutual verification arrangements that would have to be worked out would be an important step toward building a nuclear weapon free zone. So that would be another step. Also, Mr. Dherdor talked about peaceful uses of nuclear energy. Now, there are a number of countries in the region that are talking about nuclear energy programs, research programs, even power programs. There are some common elements there in the civil uses of nuclear energy. Part of the zone could be to have a discussion within the Middle East about that. There are all kinds of positive steps that could be taken toward an eventual nuclear weapon free zone, a zone free of all weapons of mass destruction, but rather than keeping, you know, banging our head against the wall on the hardest single thing to do, we should start off with a much more practical agenda. My question is, do you agree?
Well, it was almost an intervention. I have the gentleman here in front, maybe you could introduce yourself, then ask you a question.
Okay.
Then, sorry, then the gentleman in the back, just to be clear, then Ambassador...
Gender equality?
Sorry?
About gender equality?
That will come in. You just have to encourage your colleague ladies to come, but you're on the list already. Don't worry. The gentleman in the back, then Ambassador Sultanai and then you, sir. And then for the next round.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question goes to left, the Israeli left...
What's your name, please?
Well, I'm sorry. My name is Adris Arav from the Kingdom of Morocco, professor at the university. My question goes to the Israeli Lefton General Shlomo Brom. Mr. Brom, you have said in interview, I think one or two years ago, that Israel, before the deal with Iran, the Iranian deal, you said that Israel doesn't fear the Iranian treat, Israel is capable of defending itself without America. Suppose this assumption is grounded, but how can you explain two striking facts? First, the Gulf War, 1991, when Saddam Hussein scored, has have... First, the Gulf War, 1991, when Saddam Hussein's scouts have stricken, you know, the heartland of Israel. And second fact is Hezbollah, you know, rockets, which did it back to the first world, to the world's first four, you know? So, it's not in these rockets, you know? So, second time, the heartland, you know, stricken, the, sorry, the missile stricken the heartland of Israel. And we know Israel is a nuclear power. It's the only, the only, and all nuclear experts now this, you know, that Israel is the only nuclear power which her heartland has been struck. Do you think that's why the Israeli officials concluded that the only way, you know, to protect the Israeli territory is to have a nuclear second strike force capability? I mean, the dolphin submarines. Thank you. And the last question from Mr. Iman Khalil. Mr. Iman Khalil, in 2003, there is a report from the Carnegie Foundation, which said that Americans and Israelis are undergoing Israeli undersea chesters. And that's why there were, there have been earthquakes in Algeria, in Morocco, in the north, Halcima, and now it's in Italy. How, as you are belonging to the League, the Arab League, how the Arab officials, you know, react to these chesters who are, as we know, according to the Treaty of 1971, they are forbidden? Thank you.
Yeah. The gentleman in the back, maybe you could first introduce yourself, please.
My name is Maxi Lee.
Could you repeat? We don't hear it, sorry.
Yes, my name is Maxi Lee, from Italy.
Maxi Lee, Italy, Professor.
Chemical capabilities and in expertise. So, maybe it should be to start from the beginning, to establish some
Common language, common semantics, and rules of the game. For instance, it is obvious that chemical
Azarts, chemicals
Industrial acids
Are
Yeah, it is typical. This is not working. This is typical. So, for instance, chemical azar, chlorine, everything can be considered chemical weapons in the nuclear arena, my arena, which is the threshold, how much it's challenging to establish a nuclear power plant and everything. So what I'm saying is that to try to answer in a sort of single box this complex topic in which you have different methodology, different verification mechanism, different, let's say, experience, it should be perhaps better to establish some sort of dialogue among scientists in the region, inviting chemistry, biologists, and nuclear physicists to define what they perceive as challenges, and then to set some common language, and then to move to the policymaker, to the experts of arms control and so on. This is my proposal.
Thank you very much. And with that, I give the floor to Ambassador Sultanai here in the front.
Thank you very much, former ambassador to the IAEA and UN. Well, thank you very much for this very useful meeting. I have a couple of comments. First of all, the title, arms control. In the plenary, there was very good point that it was assumption that the Russians or Soviets and US had nuclear weapon, they wanted to have armed control. Arms control, nuclear arms control, WMD arms control, what is it? The title is not suitable. Therefore, we are assuming that, giving legitimacy, this is very bad, this was sort of title, which derailed the attention. The second point is, very simple question, in the region, when we are talking about Middle East Free Zone from nuclear weapon, all explained, therefore, I don't want to go to the history. Very simple question is, wherever we talk in the war, we know that country has a nuclear weapon program or has or not. Even DPRK proudly says, yes, I'm testing, although the beginning they didn't trust, but the CTBT confirmed. But in the case of Israel, we have this ambiguity, the policy, which create problems, have or not? Mr. Almert, former, in fact, Prime Minister, had an interview with the Germans, newspaper and journalist, and said, we have it. And when I was ambassador in Vienna, then in the meeting of the Lord of Governors, there was avalanches of questions. Then the Israeli representative raised hand and said, no, I deny it, we don't have it. Then I raised the hand and asked the IAEA to send a fact-finding mission, whether the Prime Minister is telling the truth or the ambassador, who is telling the truth? This is, therefore, as long as this is not clear, we cannot, in fact, move towards that ultimate direction that everybody said, even in the panel, that it is a dear goal to Middle East Free Zone. Now, having said so, Mr. Einhorn gave a couple of confidence building measures. The problem is, I agree with him, that after this historical development that Syria had joined the chemical weapon, and in fact, I was entrusted to help Syria to fully implement their obligation, therefore, this is a big step towards universality of this, and maybe the Middle East Free Zone from WMD is good. But I'm afraid that focusing on Middle East from the chemical weapon, we are diverting and putting in archive the ultimate goal and the intention of having nuclear weapon-free zone, that that should not be diluted. Even with the other CTBT, as it was mentioned, I'm not commenting on that, but I'm commenting on this matter. Therefore, we have to be very careful. I proposed last year in the same meeting here, in the same Brussels meeting, and also other venues, a suggestion, which is my own personal initiative because of all 30 years' experience, on non-attack against nuclear facilities in Middle East. It means immunity of all nuclear facilities in the Middle East could be a first confidence building measure, that all will declare that they will not attack nuclear facilities, which has, of course, a theological consequence for the region and for the world. India and Pakistan have hostile positions, but they have agreed not to attack nuclear facilities. Why not in the Middle East? Just declare that nobody will attack nuclear facilities, and all nuclear facilities will be immune. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I have the gentleman here.
Yes, I'm Dr. Nasruddin, former Director General of the Arab Atomic Energy Agency. This agency is governmental agency within the League for Arab State. And I know when the governmental organization have to discuss with the member state some problem, they have, they don't have to explain the point of view of their member state. I think the reason of the Arab African country to stay out of African freezer are much deeper than it was explained by our colleague, Professor Dardur. Second point, it's true that we have non-state actor in some Middle Eastern country, and but the problem or the question of creating this Middle Eastern free zone is still alive. Because if three or four government are weak, are weakened by the non-state actor, we still have at least 18 Arab country able to discuss the matter of free zone in the Middle East. Another point of general, he said that he is optimistic. I don't know if in the Arab side, we have to be pessimistic. But because what is happening now in our region is internal war in Iraq, mainly in Iraq and Syria, and the output, what we are afraid to happen is to creation of new states within each state, and this state will be based in religious issue, which is in line with Israel. That's why I think we have to be pessimistic. The most important to have peace in the Middle East is to have strong government in each member state, in each member state in the region, not to look to this division within each country to say it is a matter of optimistic future in the region. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we have five questions, so I will now ask the different members of the panel to answer that, and I will start in the same order with the question of Bob Einhorn, which was addressed, if I understand well, to all three of them. So, we start again with you, Professor, please.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Mr. Nasruddin. I said that I just hear the main lines, and you can, yeah. I said in my prediction that I give only the main lines. We can develop deeply each point. First of all, as the point to forbidden to attack nuclear facility, the Pindaba Treaty forbidden the attack of nuclear facility, and also forbidden the stationing any explosive device in the region of Africa. This is why my title is universalization of the Pindaba Treaty towards a global regime of security and peace, because security is a prerequisite for the peace. For the Middle Zones, I would like to suggest, as an Arab agency, there is many Arab country from Africa who are Pindaba Treaty. I suggest there is a strong close exchange between this African, Arab African country with the Middle East Arab country in order to exchange with him the spirit of the Pindaba Treaty. Pindaba Treaty is the most complete one. I said, MPT disarmament, CTBT, also for the West, forbidden to dump the West in Africa. And also, as I said before, forbidden attack any nuclear, any facilities in that country, and forbidden also any stationing any explosive nuclear device in the region. This is very important. And Pindaba Treaty look has many partnership, the IAEA, CTBTO for the 1540, the Commissioner of Geneva, and also the P5. All the P5 signed the two protocols, the Pindaba Treaty. All these are party of this, and Afcon will have agreement with IAEA, CTBTO, and all P5 countries too, in 2007. So, why I said that if you can bring universalization with the Pindaba Treaty, we can reach a global security and peace regime. I am explained. I would like to outline, Chair, in the last, there is many levels, because I have seen here people speaks at the politics, the strategical and operation, there is many, you have to structure the approach and in parallel, not in sequence. You have the politics levels, you have the strategic levels, and the operation levels. I think the operation levels that had to work with the civil society. The strategic levels is to play with the government, the foreign affairs, and politics with the government and the regions, and UN, and all the region organization, and UN organization, in order to push all these norms and standards, as I said before, legal provision, measures, norms, binding, not only make resolution, which is not binding. You have to make a legal binding provision, measures, and norms, and starting with that gives us actually the platform of Pindaba Treaty, and also brings this all the country which was in front of the Middle East, part of Pindaba Treaty, we can move and reflect this spirit on other region of Middle East. And I said, it is, it moves slowly, but it moves in the positive sense. It will be down in a certain third or fourth generation, because actually, you have to broken the static code, because all the country in the region has an interest in the static code. If we broken the static code, we can move quick, but it is not easy, because actually, the major country in the playing the region has not reached what you call a steady state equilibrium between forces. So we have all the P5, all the international organizations to work toward, to reach a steady state equilibrium between the forces in the region. Because now we have Turkey, you have Arabia Saudia, you have Iran, you have Israel, all this want to dominate the region, but you have to work to reach a steady state equilibrium between the forces in play. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I would like to add that I will write on words format, and give it to the Chair, and that is
We can distribute it, that's fine. Thank you for that. Then, General Brom, please.
Not surprisingly, I agree with most of the points that Bob Einhorn made. He actually continued my line of thought. And that concerns also some first steps on the way to WMD Free Zone. CDPT, for example, I can talk about my own country. We are actually willing to join the CTBT. We took steps to join the CTBT, and the main reason we didn't do it and we didn't ratify it is because the Americans didn't do it, and it is the kind of relationship that we are having.
The egg and the chicken.
The egg and the chicken. Chemical weapons.
Well, let's not discuss the egg and the chicken. Let's move on.
Chemical weapons free zone, it's a good idea, but I am sure that there will be opposition from one of the, some of the Arab states, and I understand why there will be an opposition, because everything is connected. So they will stay. Why chemical weapons and not nuclear weapons, et cetera?
But you think if Israel would ratify, that would be a problem for the others, particularly now that Syria has ratified the Chemical Weapons Convention?
If Israel unilaterally will do it, of course, it will not be a problem, but nobody is willing to do anything unilaterally, unless they are forced. Syria was forced, Libya was forced, Iraq was forced.
So Israel should
But the main issue
Sorry. Sorry, I think we should give General Brom.
But the main question is, we are talking about different regional arrangement. Where exactly there will be discussed? We forget that there is no regional forum in which this kind of subject can be discussed. I am sorry, but I'll go to one of the things that Ambassador Sultanai said. Any other suggestion? Seems there isn't a suggestion. Not an agreement, not of non-attack of nuclear facilities? Fine, where it will be discussed? Is Iran willing to participate in a regional forum on which this kind of subjects will be discussed? Without it having a veto, on what subject will be discussed? Everything can be discussed there. Will Iran be willing, and the other states in the Middle East, to participate in such a forum? So, sorry? So the main problem is that, the main problem is that we don't have these kind of forums. We, how exactly we are going to discuss it?
Please.
Well, the forums generally exist.
We didn't do it yet, can you answer your question?
No.
You get, please.
Forums really exist. You have the United Nations as a forum, you have the International Atomic Energy as a forum. We met in Lyon, we met in Geneva, we met everywhere, and all these forums were found to be useless at the end of the day. Bob, your suggestion is quite interesting. I mean, ACERS is a very positive experience, by the way, yet it was a very good starting point, yet leaving a deep scar and slipping into coma. Yet it was a very good starting point, yet leaving a deep scar and slipping into coma. Perhaps you don't know that within the multilateral process, Akers was the first subcommittee to fall into coma. So possibly this is not a very good example, so...
Oh, Chair did it, I am a survivor.
You know, we started as a track one, then track 1.5, and eventually came into a track two process. And, I mean, I mean, we advised the facilitator, by the way, that the Akers process going on by the same token, by the same strategy adopted within the Akers process was not, you know, a conducive act eventually. A chemical weapon free zone, I mean, you know, continuously concessions are repeatedly asked by the Arab states, you know. Technically speaking, and politically speaking, the Middle East is basically a chemical weapon free zone. All Arab countries have signed and ratified the Chemical Weapons Convention. All Arab countries, except for Egypt. All Arab countries, including Egypt, have signed and ratified the Biological Weapons Convention, except for Israel. So Israel is not signing and ratifying the NPT, is not signing the Chemical Weapons Convention, Biological Weapons Convention. And then, so in fact, practically speaking, the chemical weapon free zone exists, you know. I mean, politically speaking. The other issue is, I mean, we have seen repeatedly in international context the creation of nuclear weapon free zones, but I have not seen any solid example by which we can be guided, in which a chemical weapon free zone has been established, or a biological weapon free zone has been established. And by the way, the NPT review conference extends the parameters of a WMB free zone to include chemical, biological, nuclear plus delivery vehicles, missiles. Missiles now is part of the agenda, you know. Dealing with this on a step-by-step basis, I don't see this, you know, happening, and not seeing this to be fruitful. My Moroccan friend, the earthquakes that you have mentioned, I mean, we are aware that the Israeli side is conducting, you know, underground testing on the other side of the border. We share a very long border with Israel, a border overlooking the only surviving occupation in the globe. And within these borders, we monitor from now, from every, from time to another, some conventional testing being conducted underground. But I think the most important issue is the nuclear, the environmental consequences of a nuclear, of an Israeli nuclear program. Dimona is not far away from Jordan. Aerial distance is about thirty-five kilometers. We know that the Israeli side is dumping its nuclear site on the peripheries of Dimona. We know that the most recent wave of earthquakes in late 1990s have impacted significantly the underground heavy water tanks within Dimona. Israel has three facilities, by the way. One of them is open to international inspection, which is Nahal Surik, and others are completely closed. Dimona operational time, ladies and gentlemen, is now over. I mean, this is a facility that has been constructed since the late 1960s. A catastrophe, God forbid, a catastrophe in Dimona will impact the Israeli society first and foremost, and the entire region. Our Middle East is so small and so tiny, sorry, and Jordanians as well.
There are many studies up to date.
Yes, of course, yes.
Yeah, but maybe, sorry.
So, yeah, I think the environmental consequences of an Israeli nuclear program has to be taken into consideration, plus the fact that the area resides on a seismologically active rift. And that is a situation that you have to take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like last remarks.
Yeah.
Very quickly, just about chemical convention. If Iraq and Syria and Libya are forced to sign and ratify, Israel has the force to do, to do, not sign and ratify. This is in simple picture, you can develop. And this is part of the statico, that, for example, Israel went to statico, will be... And Egypt follow him, they said, we sign the NPT, and when we want not, will be part of additional protocol and so on.
Thank you. No, 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 sorry, I have to, because we have to finish the other questions. Please.
So, I said, I said just...
Yes.
I finished my remarks.
Comments by that, okay, thank you. General Brum, we still have the question from our colleague from Morocco, which was addressed to you. And I think you addressed the question of Ambassador Sultani on the non-attack forum. You addressed already. Could you shortly answer the question of a colleague from Morocco?
Well, I don't think that anyone thinks that nuclear weapons are a remedy for every security threat. Nuclear weapons are only, are only aimed at preventing existential threats. Now Saddam's missiles and Hezbollah rockets are not an existential threats. And the second strike capability that you mentioned, that supposedly we are building, the only purpose of a second strike capability is to contribute to deterrence against a nuclear strike on the other party. And the problem is that the nuclear deal with Iran, which, by the way, I supported, because I saw that it is better than the alternative, but the nuclear deal with Iran practically is not, is only delaying the problem to a later stage, to, for ten, fifteen years. And after ten, fifteen years, we will be back on the same point, on which Iran is a threshold nuclear state, when it concerns, of course, military nuclear capabilities. I have no problem with Iranian civilian nuclear problems, nuclear programs. And then, once again, we will have to, 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 it will be dependent on, purely on Iranian decision, whether they are making the final step and building military nuclear capabilities or not. So what I mean to say, it's a part of another game, not Saddam's missiles and Hezbollah's rockets. And, but I didn't refer also to someone that Ambassador Sultani said, and that is about the Israeli nuclear ambiguity policy. Well, I'm not so sure that the alternative is better. And I completely understand why Iran would like to, 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 Israel to stop with this ambiguity, because Iran thinks that it, then it will be easier to put pressure on Israel to disarm. But that is the only argument that he can make, because I don't think that the ambiguity policy makes Israel more threatening or something like that.
No, 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 sorry, sorry, you had your chance. We now go to the second round, and again, I must ask to put your question. We have one other half hour, and I see several people who want to address the question. And I will start with the gender balancer, don't worry. And that is the lady secretary. Maybe you could introduce yourself shortly, madame.
Okay, thank. Nabil Al-Munla, I'm retired ambassador for the Foreign Service of Kuwait. I'm a survivor of Akers. I was the head of my delegation meetings between Washington and Moscow for quite some time. And just to remind some of the participants here, it was arms control and regional security, not disarmament. And why did it fizzle out, or something like that, for several reasons? Some of you are aware, because there were maximalist objectives put on some of the committees rather than others. There were other reasons as well, which was the political one, because Syria did not want to be part of that whole system and the different committees. And so some of us, the other delegations, found that we would not be able to go forward without the participation of the Syrian government and the Lebanese government in our midst. So that is one of the reasons. I'm also the former chair of the Board of Governors during very interesting year, 2003, the PRK Iran, Iraq, and the quest for safeguards for the agency. Now, we have always been somehow more practical in our objectives towards the arms control. We're a very small country, but we belong to this conglomerate of the Gulf Cooperation Council, and we saw that the incremental approach might be much better than the others, not the big signing ceremonies or whatnot. For example, we think that countries of the region should, if they do not ratify the CTBT, oh, they should be active participants in the convention, like paying, like what the United States does, boosting up the budget and having stations. And I think Iran still has to approve the stationing of a seismic post on its territory in northern part.
Could you come to your question, please?
Yeah, okay. And the question is, how can we go forward besides all the big theatrical thing of assigning ceremony? Can we have the countries adhere to, for example, the Convention on the Safety of Nuclear Installations? Can we do something more incremental than the bigger picture that needs more of a political and makes the countries lose face and with the kind of background and the luggage that they carry behind? Can we, can Israel, for example, join some kind of a safeguards arrangement and make it publicly known, so it will rest our concerns in the region? Thank you.
Thank you. The lady there in the middle.
First of all, thank you very much for a very stimulating debate. Every other answer or the question that is asked bring about more questions and answers. My name is Dr. Annie Wakar. I'm a lecturer in the University of Westminster, and I'm also a research officer. So basically, my question is regarding, how do we get to the way of basically knowing that there is so much regional instability in that region? And we are now talking about, like my fellow colleague talked about, how about signing sort of an official document to just say, all right, you know, this is it, we've done it? I mean, there are so many things, like there's a nuclear pariah, have and have nots. You have Israel, where there's obviously ambiguity, Iranian nuclear deal at the same time. What process, I mean, it follows the question that my fellow colleague got. What is the other process in terms of knowing that there is so much regional instability at the moment, so much turmoil? And knowing that this is one way forward that we need to look into and maybe address this issue? Do we need to have a sort of a different kind of a regime within this nuclear nonproliferation regime that addresses, you know, this region in particular when it comes to nuclear arms control, chemical weapons and stuff? Do we need to first address that originally in collaboration with, you know, regional organizations, which can have, as one of the other fellow colleagues from Brookings Institute talked about, having CBMs? I mean, that's one way forward, at looking towards maybe creating a separate, you know, regime outside the nuclear nonproliferation regime to first address these issues and then make a way forward? Do you think, is there a possibility that maybe you can help, deliver something like that, knowing the situation at the moment? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Then Ambassador Val Al-Assad, please.
Thank you. I have two comments, that I'm trying to form them in the form of questions. My name is Wael Al-Assad. I work for the League of Arab States. Now, I understand what Mr. Brum has said regarding the transformation or metamorphosis of the region. But to use that as an excuse has become a bit old. Since the seventies, whenever the issue of the zone has been put to the table, we were told the time is not right. The circumstances are not conducive for discussion, the security issues, and so on. So since the seventies, Israel has refused to participate in any serious discussion about disarmament and the issue of the zone. In the seventies, they said no until the eighties to the resolution in the GA, and so on. And in the eighties, they said yes, but we won't direct discussions. When we had direct discussions, they said no to the nuclear file in the Akers, and so on. Now, my question is, well, I can understand that if you have nuclear weapons, you're reluctant to give them up. But there was a window of great opportunity for the Israelis in the preparatory meetings that were done in Lyon and in Geneva. He referred to the lack of a regional forum. We offered a grander forum. We wanted to meet all under the UN umbrella and to seriously discuss this. They said no. And they said we have to meet informally with the UN. Now, all the Arab states said, okay, agreed, we will come to the table. Now, eighteen Arab states came to the table and sat with Israel, and they just missed the opportunity of a serious discussion. They started talking about the grand solution. They didn't want the zone. They thought the zone is too incremental, too small. They wanted to discuss in one package all regional security issues. And when we asked for a definition for that, they said terrorism, short-range missiles, conventional arms, and then the zone. So I think we need to refrain from repeating the same old arguments that we have been doing for the last forty years. I totally respect the experience of Mr. Einhorn, but he knows that the Akers, we already have three versions of what happened there. And this is what's happening now. Now we're getting three. Why? Because it's all done informally, it's all done undercover, and there is no... Well, yes, 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 but I'm talking about this process now. And there is no stock-taking, there is no need for following through on what we're doing. I have no problem people saying what they want, but we have to be a little bit clear about it, not repeat the same old thing. Track two and track one and a half are excellent to support a formal track. But on their own, they are totally non-productive. I have been involved, and so many others, since the nineties in track one and a half and track two. They produce nothing. Sometimes they add to the aggravation among the members, unless they are in support of a formal track. My last point, if I may, and I'm sorry if I have taken too long. There is this regional setup that we are concerned about our regional security, and this is why we're trying to push for the zone. But the zone has an impact on the international scene, on the review process. It has become part and parcel of the review process, and this issue of the Middle East is not going to go away. Now, it has caused the success, it was part of the success of 2010, and it was the main reason for the failure of 2015. And we are heading towards 2020, and that's not very far. And it might be a major problem if we do not start thinking properly on how to handle this issue at the international level, at the multilateral level. Of course, this issue is very complicated, there are many things happening, but I feel a little bit irritated when I hear discussions about what happened in Lyon and in, without... You can, you can say...
I see your point, but let's stop here, because the longer you talk, the more time you take from your colleagues in the room. Okay.
I apologize for that.
Okay, thank you. And in starting properly, that's what we're doing here, Ambassador. But thank you for your points, and I think they're very pertinent. And I will ask all three people off the forum to react to it, particularly because you bring up the Lyon thing. I think that is good, and we heard little about that. Now, I have to select now, I had Professor Ronzetti already, so please, Professor, to you, then the colleague there, and then you will be the last speaker. But please be short, because then the forum has time.
Very quickly, Mr. Chairman, thank you. It's Natalino Ronzetti, Istituto Affari Internazionale. Non-state actors were mentioned, but was not deepened this problem. Because I guess this is very important, also the definition of non-state actors. What means just a terrorist insurgent community, militia belonging to a state or not? This is important, and I guess one point in the Middle East could be a fight against the non-state actors, as we see now, provided that we define precisely what means non-state actors. The second point about a treaty not to attack nuclear facilities. You have, uh, to distinguish here between time over peace and wartime. In time over peace, I guess it is forbidden by international law. The law of self-defense does not allow you to attack another states unless you have been the object of an armed attack. In wartime, there is a protocol, Protocol One, additional to G- Geneva Convention, prohibiting to attack objective, releasing dangerous forces. The problem is that in the Middle East, not all countries are party to Protocol One, and I guess would be very important for those country to become party to Protocol One, additional to Geneva Convention. Because the law is there, what you can do at most. For instance, to have a regional resolution is easier to obtain a regional resolution instead of a treaty, since a treaty should be ratified. And, uh, the third comment or question is about the prohibition treaty and the ANGA resolution. We hear that this morning that the treaty will enter into force without qualified ratification because the opponents want not to repeat the mistake of a C T B T O. But the problem is that if you don't have some countries in the Middle East which ratify this prohibition treaty, this treaty will be dead letter for those countries. Thank you.
Thank you. Then our colleague here in the front. Yes, please, Ambassador.
Thank you, Ambassador Van der Quest. Uh, Waal wanted me to mention something that is useful to know from... Uh, my name is Ambassador Mahmoud Karim from Egypt. The Secretary General of the Arab League, actually the Arab Summit and Foreign Ministers has decided to form, uh, a distinguished group of people, uh, very limited number to advise the Secretary General and the Foreign Ministers on future actions to be taken in the field of non-proliferation and disarmament insofar as, as the Arab position itself is concerned. Waal is the initiator. Uh, I am the representative of, of Egypt chosen in my personal capacity in that, uh, group. On Africa, my colleague and brother, Mr. Dardur, mentioned things that forced me really to respond.
Thank you.
Meaning that, uh, we do not want to give the impression, because you mentioned that, uh, that Egypt is, uh, either boycotting or is an outcast of the, the African zone, when in reality, uh, may I remind you of the nineteen ninety-six Cairo Declaration on the Establishment of a Nuclear Free Zone in Africa, which was signed in Cairo, which was my responsibility as, as, uh, Under-Secretary General at the time? And, uh, the, uh, the fact that Egypt was a very important negotiator for the good text of this treaty. So, uh, let us keep this in mind. Disarmament is, is not really a dirty word. And when we speak of, uh, issues such as aerial reconnaissance, joint exercise and so on, uh, we, within the J A, I've been doing disarmament from nineteen seventy-six. Uh, we have, uh, reached to, uh, with, to a J A that is very useful to us, saying that confidence-building measures and so on, all these kinds of measures constitute, in our opinion, what we call collateral measures under the rubric of disarmament. So it is perfectly all right to consider that all these measures that we can label as, uh, confidence-building as part and parcel of the disarmament process itself. And I say this in, 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 in full friendliness to my good friend, uh, General Shlomo Brom, uh, because I do not want him to, to, uh, to, to differentiate between collateral measures and between disarmament proper, when in reality they both constitute the same thing. Shlomo, in nineteen seventy-seven, I negotiated with a very distinguished Israeli ambassador to the first committee in the United Nations, Oxford-educated Ambassador Elan. And we negotiated a text on the establishment of a nuclear free zone in the Middle East. In nineteen seventy-nine, we managed to change the Israeli abstention to a yes. And in nineteen eighty, we managed to change the Israeli yes to a vote by consensus in the first committee and in the general assembly. And incidentally, that vote by consensus is honored until today. So if we really want to do progress, we can. If we want political will, we can. If we need people who can convince their governments that you need to take painful, quote-unquote, painful decisions for the realization of this objective in our region, then we have to do it. I agree with you, of course, but the argument can go both ways. If we continue to say that, uh, pressure is, uh, the, the present situation in the Middle East does not necessitate, does not qualify the region into and so, I argue differently. I say that because of all these negative aspects, it is even more and more important now to indulge into discussions and very important discussions on aerial reconnaissance, border control, search and rescue, satellite imagery, and so if we had cooperation in these fields, we would have been able to detect it. As we speak, there are I S L members leaving Mosul, going to Syria, and other fighters coming from Syria back to Mosul to defend Mosul against, uh, against, against forces. If we had better intelligence cooperations in this regard, by satellite imagery and other measures, then we would have been able. So actually, what we need to do is more and more cooperation. And this brings me to the wisdom of what, uh, my good friend Bob Einhorn said. Yes, we started Akers, but we started Akers and we grew. We grew, I was co-chair with David Fami at the time. As we grew, we included Saudi Arabia. Saudi Arabia was not there at the very beginning. The I A E A was not there at the very beginning, but step by step, Akers grew and grew and grew. And then we started to rehash and to study other important issues with the participation of Israel at the time. The elements of the zone, the agreement on what constitutes a zone free of weapons of mass discussion is a very packed, heavy homework. And this group can begin with this objective. At least identify what are the elements that can constitute a zone free of weapons of mass discussion in the Middle East. And in the same time, you can have a different track that discusses all, all the issues that are pertaining to the challenges of our security situation in our part of the world and how we can better cooperate in order to come, overcome these difficulties. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The gentleman there.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Erwin Heckel from Germany. I must admit that I joined this session here because I was struck by the courage of the organizers of the conference. And I must admit, uh, that I fell into the trap and take the title of the session seriously. It says arms control and disarmament in the Middle East. Now, what has happened, at least ninety percent of all speakers here have talked about nuclear things. I don't read anything nuclear here. It seems as if everyone agreed that it means nuclear. Why is that so?
No, we, we talked about chemical as well, huh?
Yes, okay, chemicals as well. Yes, but, but, uh, yes, okay.
Please, could you come to your question, please?
Uh, but, uh, I, I, I wonder, is everyone here agreed that nuclear or chemical is really the most important and acute problem in the Middle East? Now, I, I can't believe it. The Middle, uh, in, in the Middle Eastern region, at least four states, at least four states are not functioning as states, as states anymore, they are in full bloodshed. Uh, violent conflict is raging in several, uh, of these states. Millions of people are running away from the region, most of them, uh, to neighboring countries or, or to Europe. And, uh, talking about, uh, nuclear, which is really, uh, not something that is, uh, uh, being accurately, uh, in, in, in danger of, uh, being used for violent conflict, is like, like, like fiddling when Rome burns. Um, I, I must, uh, say, I find this, uh, session, including most speakers on the panel and in the, uh, in the audience, an outrage. This is not a question, I'm sorry to say, it is a statement.
Well, thank you for your statement then. Uh, then I would now go back, uh, to, uh, the panel, uh, members, um, for the, uh, last, uh, questions. And I would ask them to highlight, uh, two, uh, things. I would like them to answer to the questions, of course, but to highlight two things which I found notable and I think which suit also, uh, to this session. And, um, that is what the Ambassador of Egypt said. If we want progress, we can. I think that's an important statement. And, um, Ambassador Al Assad, uh, referred to the window of opportunity there was in two thousand and twelve, which was not used. And I would like, ask the three of them then, what sort of thing should we do to get another window of opportunity this time? So that, I would highlight those two, but please answer also to the other points. And I hope that we can give end with a little bit of hope this session.
Thank you, Chair.
Professor.
Thank you, Chair. I hope that, uh, the Excellency Ambassador gives us the opportunity to, to speak more in the region. Of course, if you want and if you believe and you are faithful, I think we have a very nice binding and unbinding multilateral regional instrument that we have to use in order to reach a nuclear weapon-free zone in the Middle East. Why? With a negotiation, negotiation, uh, with a negative, uh, with a negative security of the P five. First, you have to believe and faithful. And the second, we need the, the negative security of the P five. First, to broken the statico maintained enter different argument because the steady-state equilibrium between the playing force in the Middle East are not attained. I would like to highlight one point. Israel, India and Pakistan are called border country. We have on the fields, the India case. Now, India case, you can say that has civil N P T and military N P T. So, does the India case will be benchmarked to the Pakistan and Israel case in the future? This is my question and open windows. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair.
Okay, I, I'll start by trying to answer your two questions. Uh, if the parties wants, uh, to, to make progress, they can make progress, certainly. But the problem is that, uh, the definition of progress is completely different for the, the, for the different, uh, parties. I'll give an example from Akers, became a popular subject. One can get the impression that, uh, on Akers, we didn't talk about the nuclear subject. We talked a lot about the nuclear subject and W M D free zone. Actually, there were, there were two groups. One was dedicated for, for what Ambassador perhaps said, C B Ms, collateral, et cetera, et cetera. And the others was, were dedicated to discuss the real tough issues. But eventually it broke up, it, it broke up. And while it broke up, because the, at that time, the Egyptian definition of progress was an Israeli commitment that it will join the N P T. If that is progress, that's the end of the road. It's not simply progress. That should be the case at the end, maybe. And that, uh, and that leads me to something that the young lady there said. She said that we have to do, to build a regime for our region that is not necessarily under or part of the global regime. I fully agree. Because we cannot ignore the fact that this region have some very particular characteristics. You know, one can, uh, ignore, uh, non-state actors and so on, but let, let's loo- look at the case of the, uh, Chemical Weapons Convention, C W C. Well, everyone is saying that Syria joined and adhered to the chemical weapons systems. But at the same time, Syria is using chemical weapons against its own citizens. So what kind of adherence it is? There is a problem in the Middle East. So I agree, we have to tell something that is specific for the Middle East. Uh, I wish the Middle East was different, but that is not the case.
W M D free zone?
Hmm?
W M D free zone?
W M D free zone. So that leads me to, to my friend Waal. He says, well, uh, when you talk about the transformation, it's only an excuse. And, uh, uh, and it's not true that, uh, that, that the Arab parties refuse to, to have a regional framework that we discuss this issue. The Arab parties, uh, suggested something that is better, that it will be part of the U N discussions. That seems to me a bad joke. Because the U N, which is a global framework, and you know what is the status of Israel in the U, in the U N, where votes are counted? How many votes, how many parties will be, uh, willing to support anything that Israel is saying? Even if Israel will say that now it's the daytime and the, the sun is glowing. I doubt whether it will get a majority in the U N to support this argument. So that is the, the substitute that you are suggesting? I don't think that a broader framework is better. A better, a broader framework is worse because it is an excuse for the regional parties not to have a regional framework. Now, uh, we are not interested in, uh, in ceremonies. That's not the issue. The issue is to how to make real, uh, progress. And when I am talking about, when I, I accepted some of Bob Arino's ideas, it was not about C B Ms. You, when you refer to what I am saying, it was as if I was talking about C B Ms. By the way, I didn't mention the, the name or the acronym C B Ms. And intentionally so. I think that having, uh, a, a, a regional C T B T, it's not a C B M. It's something, uh, very concrete. And by the way, something very concrete in the sense also that the first steps were already taken. You know, where the Italian gentleman talked about cooperation between scientists, uh, building the, the, the seismology, seismological system, network that was supposed to track, uh, nuclear tests in the Middle East was one of the few occasions where there was cooperation between scientists of the different parties, Israelis and Arabs. So I am, I am talking about concrete steps which can be taken. And that answers your second question.
Thank you.
Just a moment. Now, uh, referring to what the, the gentleman from Germany said, I, I, I think he is right. That is one of the problems. That's what I say, that progress has a, a different definition by Israel and by some Arab parties. Because for the Arab parties, it's true, it's only the nuclear area. Because for the Arab parties, it's true, it's only the nuclear area. For Israel, it's much broader.
Gliom? Would you like to say something about it?
Glion.
Glion was mentioned, the Glion Conference, or you don't want to... Okay, that's fine. Helly, your last speaker.
Thank you very much.
Some words of hope.
Some words of hope, okay. You know, I first respond to my Italian colleague on the threat of non-state actors, and then I go to your question. You know, Professor, the Syrian regime came to the conclusion that it should disarm from its all chemical weapons and chemical weapons arsenal, because it came to the conclusion, it came to the realization that chemical weapons were basically a burden rather than providing a security measure. And I believe if things proceeds in a similar manner, Israel will soon experience a very similar situation, a very similar situation by state actors, by an insider, by an error operation, et cetera. So that leads me basically to Shlomo's idea on deterrence. I think Israel relying on nuclear deterrence has been a totally failing policy. Nuclear deterrence, in the case of Israel, means self-destruction, total self-destruction, which is not, I think, which is not your intention. Then, if your intention is to deter a nuclear attack by an Arab country, this will not happen, not in the near future, not in the long term as well. All Arab countries are bound by the N P T, by C W C and B W C. So I think, eventually speaking, the growing reliance by Israel on its nuclear weapons to achieve deterrence against conventional capabilities possessed by Arab neighboring countries is not working. It hasn't worked definitely within the 1973, when the Egyptians have tried to gain, well, gain control over Sinai. It didn't take place during the Saddam Hussein times and certainly during Hezbollah. And the last thing that a suicide bomber would be thinking about is a nuclear deterrence. Now, going back to your question, sir, and it's to do with measures. I think the most important measure that we could have for the time being that could accelerate the process would be Israeli willingness. Israeli willingness to join regional discussions, Israeli willingness to cooperate on areas of joint interest, incremental steps, and that goes to Ambassador Mullah's question, the possibility of having and initiating a no-first-use treaty within the Middle East, incremental steps in the fields of environmental sampling. We have requested repeatedly the Israeli side to provide us access to the peripheries of Dimona to conduct some environmental sampling, if this was totally rejected. All of the initiatives that we have been doing were basically rejected by the Israeli side. So Israeli willingness is highly needed. Thank you.
Thank you all. No, we stop here, we've gone over the time already, Professor. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is like a colleague. I want to thank all three speakers, but also you, for having a very good discussion. Thank you so much.